I'd like to call a order the July meeting of the Suffolk City School Board. And I'd like to ask Mr. Copeland to say the Pledge of Allegiance for us, please. Everybody, please.
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. You will be seated.
May I have certification of the closed meeting, please?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of July 9th, 2015 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So move.
Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Nebraska?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do we have any speakers for the opening?
No early appearances.
No early speakers, okay. We've got reports by the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm going to call to the podium Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw, Public Information Officer, to present our good news report.
Good evening. Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience at home some of the great things that are happening in our schools each and every day, some of the accomplishments of our students and our staff. Tonight, we want to brag about the success and the excitement that our expanded elementary school program is generating. And it's only half over. It's got another three weeks to go. The program, Learning and Enrichment for Academic Progress, is nicknamed LEAP, has a lovely little frog as its logo. We have some photos and video to share with you, as well as some students here tonight who want to tell you in their own words and show you some of their own projects about how LEAP is impacting them. Kathryn Pichon is the LEAP principal and Kimberly Nierman is the program coordinator. And they want to now share more information with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are very excited about sharing our LEAP program. This has been a very exciting summer for students and staff. And we're just going to go through the presentation briefly because we really want to make this about the students. We want them to share their experience with you. So they're going to have a little show and tell to present to you at the end of our presentation. So this summer, we have had about 440 students present this week, with the addition of 60 students recently from our waitlist.
Our theme this summer is "Where Will You Be?" And we wanted to make sure that the students realized that within education, their world is without borders. So in the first week, we've highlighted our local middle schools. Next week, we'd move into the local high schools, followed by local colleges, and then ending our summer program with a more global view so that the students can really expand their horizons.
We've embedded plenty of health and wellness activities into our academic portion of the day. We have things like a scheduled brain break in each day. We also have healthy facts of the day, and those are scheduled into our schedule daily. We also have in your handout on page 22, a list of all of the enrichment activities that are provided daily to students throughout the LEAP program, with a description of each. None of this would be possible without our donors, our financial donors, as well as our community partners, their time and their efforts provided to us daily. We want to also make sure we acknowledge United Way of Southampton Roads, Obese Healthcare Foundation, Early Childhood Development Commission, and Birdsong Foundation for their financial contributions to the program. We also want to acknowledge Women of the Moose. They just have presented us with an $850 check to help with our backpack program. We would like to provide each student with a backpack of supplies at the end of the When we had, before we started this program, we wanted to have a parent meeting to introduce them to what we were offering, as well as to provide students an opportunity to select their enrichment. And we had standing room only, no parking available, parents lined up out the door, trying to get their students in, students that were not even registered. It was actually, parents were invited that were, of students that were registered, but we had everybody coming. So they were actually coming to register their kids. So it was a very huge turnout, so we're very excited about that.
These are just some photos to show you some of the wonderful things happening in our academic morning. Down at the bottom, you'll notice students standing in front of life-size drawings. The first day of school, we had them trace each other and decorate them to show their personal interests and ambitions. And then we have them lining all the halls of the school to sort of show the children of Suffolk. And as the program continues throughout the summer, the students are going to go back and add some things that they have discovered that they might possibly want to be when they grow up one day, based on the things that they've been exposed to through our summer program. So these are some more pictures of our academics. In the middle, there's a picture of students holding United for Children bags. This is part of our incentive program. Each week, students and staff are rewarded for their being at school each and every day of that week. And we started off with smaller prizes like outdoor activities and games. This week, we gave out movie passes. And as the summer goes on, the incentives get bigger and better to try to encourage these students to stay a part of the program consistently, as well as to reward our staff for staying with us and giving us their all. There is a picture here of a sack race, and that is actually during the academic program because we really do incorporate a lot of health and wellness and movement into just, not just our enrichment, but in the academic portion of the day as well.
And this is just a slide that's highlighting the student engagement that goes on every day in the LEAP program. And then here, we have what showcases the health and wellness that we're providing. On the left, you'll see our dental van screenings taking place. In the middle, you'll see the students with their pedometers. All students and staff received a pedometer. And weekly, they track their number of steps for the class. And the winning class at each grade level receives popsicles. They get excited about that. They also use those steps for academics. They work on averaging and all kinds of stuff, graphing. I mean, they're really, really involved with the pedometer races between the grade levels. And then you'll see the little guy down here on the bottom right. This is our life skills class, one of our enrichment classes provided by Western Tidewater Community Services Board. And LEAP has been provided the opportunity of piloting Suffolk's new online Volunteer Connect program. We had 36 volunteers register through this program. And of that 36, we actually have 30 consistent volunteers weekly. 30 volunteers regularly come to Macbin to work with these students. And we also have our very own Mr. Mittnick, who comes every single Wednesday to volunteer with our students. And we really, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You see in the top picture that we just, one day, we just randomly asked all volunteers that were there that day to come and take a group photo. So they do a fabulous job. We are extremely proud of our high school volunteers that are earning their community service hours. We actually have some students that have already received all of their hours, but they still come every day. They actually work 8:30 to 3:30 every single day in our program. They love it. And the bottom left, you'll see the women, Suffolk Business Women's Program. They actually came and decorated all of our bulletin boards before school started, so our teachers were surprised with the building already decorated. This is me again. This video that we're about to show, this is our Fun in the Sun enrichment class. And they're actually doing, this class is all about foundations, which is curriculum in the classroom, but the kids really don't even know it. They think they're just in an enrichment class, having a good old time. And they're actually doing a foundation sort in this video. And then on the right side, you'll see our, we have every enrichment session, they take two, three-week sessions. But our swimmers, they take the same session all six weeks because they're getting six full weeks of swim lessons. So those are our students that are receiving six weeks of swim lessons that are being provided by the YMCA. So they actually travel to the YMCA each day for their enrichment. And so, as you can see, everybody wanted to go to swim lessons. And this, we provided this to beginning swimmers only, so these are students that really did need to learn how to swim.
Ms. Pichon, you mind sharing the sorting that they were doing with foundations? You want to explain what they actually were doing?
They were sorting, I believe they were sorting the letters with the sounds.
Okay.
And then on this slide, I just love these two enrichment classes. These are probably two of my favorites. The one on the left is the woodworking class. And this was the very first week of the class. The instructor just threw out all this wood. And he asked the kids to just write down what they thought it was, to brainstorm. And most of them just thought it was junk. That's all they wrote, just a bunch of junk. And if you would have went in there this week, they were, they ended up creating a refurbished jewelry box, a planter, a butcher block cutting board. They had sanded these things, they had polished them, they had painted them. I mean, they were so proud of these finished products. But it was from what they thought was just a pile of junk. And then on the right is the French class, which has been so exciting. Today, they actually had a parent performance. Parents came out to watch them perform a song, "Ferragaka." I don't even know if I'm saying that right. I know I have my French teacher in here. She's probably going to get mad at me. But they've actually been learning numbers, alphabet, days of the week, months of the year, colors, greetings, eating food like crepes, chocolate mousse, different cheeses, French bread. I had a parent meeting, a parent conference, and I asked the student to tell me what he's been learning in his enrichment. And he starts counting, and I'm thinking he's going to stop at 10. And so I said, "Oh, that's so wonderful." He says, "Oh, no, there's more." And he just keeps going and going. So I mean, they are just truly learning so much. And these, both of these classes are taught by teacher assistants in my building. This is just hobbies of theirs. So I just think it's wonderful. That's probably why they're my favorites, too.
There is a video on this screen that is just an example of some of our second and third grade girls involved in cheerleading. We also had another group of cheerleaders that were the older girls. And today, they also gave a performance for family members. And we got to go and watch, and they were wonderful, and they were just so proud. They had made matching bows, and so they were all in uniform. It was very nice. And then in the top right-hand corner, there is a picture of some of our students that are learning the basics of field hockey. And at the bottom, there was, there is a enrichment class called All the Right Moves, where they are learning about manners and etiquette. Nope, this one's me, sorry. Okay, so on the right, excuse me, on the left, there are some students doing some experiments in a science camp session. And in the center, there is a class called Kids in the Kitchen. And this is where students are learning all about nutrition and healthy eating. And not only are they learning about it, they're also eating it. They are making food, following recipes. And over on the right, we have the martial arts class. And there's also a video where you can see some of the moves that they are learning.
Ready and one, two. One, two. One, strike, block, two, strike back. There you go now, one more time, go. Good. There you go, last one, this one, go. Good art.
So we really wanted to document the children's view of our program. So each Thursday, the older kids write a paragraph, and the younger kids draw pictures of something they learned and something they loved about their week. So we are collecting these and creating a binder with all of these. This is just, these are two examples of things that they had written. And it's just amazing to see some of their insight as to how their summer is going. They're absolutely loving it, having a blast. And we invite you at any time to come by and read our binder.
We do, because it's getting really fat, too.
Yes, we're going to need a second binder.
That's right. Finally, we would love to be able to give every student, again, with a backpack, fully loaded, so that they can start the school year off right. We did receive that $850 donation, and we're still looking for the rest of the money to fund this. We're going to need about $2,000. And we hope that you enjoyed our presentation. But this is not it, because the best part is yet to come. We are going to let the students do a little show and tell. And if I could get my...
Ms. Pichon, before you go...
Yes, sir.
Would you please tell us how much money you need for the remainder of the backpacks and where we can donate the money to?
Yes, sir. You can contact Beth Ann Bradshaw with the rest of the funding. And we need a total of $2,000, and we've received 850.
So $1,200 you'd be looking for, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
$1,250. Thank you. Spanish.
About, yes. We'll take more. We'll load them up heavier.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to ask that Aiden and Nyana and Rebecca and Zaire come up, please. And I really, really want to thank their parents for bringing them. Parents, can you stand for me? And before they present, I cannot do this without thanking the staff that came out. These are the wonderful teachers in our program. Suffolk has some of the best teachers, by the way. I want to steal all of them from my school. They are so wonderful. Can all of the staff that came out today, please stand? Okay, we're going to go ahead and start with Aiden. Aiden, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself right here, honey?
Sure. My name is Aiden Ellis, and I am in third grade. And I was in Pioneer, and now I am really having lots of fun in LEAP. And in the mornings, we get started off with our breakfast, and I guess...
Just tell them something that you really enjoy about your morning, and then show them something you are from your enrichment.
I like seeing my teacher. And they are Ms. Ferrari and Ms. Watson, and they are really good teachers. And I like to see my friends in the morning. And in the, pretty much in the afternoon, we do some fun activities like Jeopardy. And we pretty much are learning about main idea and author's purpose, and a little bit of time and, yeah, time. I am in, my enrichment is martial arts, and I can't remember all the moves, but I'm going to show you one. So if someone, if someone comes and tries to push you, you, if they push you on the shoulders, you step back and try to push it from the force, and then you grab their wrist, and then you pull your shoulder, and then you pound it down. And if they're stronger than you, you squat. I guess I'm done.
Okay, next, we have Nyana.
My name is Nyana Doughty.
Tell them the wonderful school you go to.
I go to Macbin.
What do you like about the mornings when you're in your academic class?
I like my teacher, and some of my friends are in my class.
What kind of things are you learning?
In reading, I'm learning main idea. And in math, I'm learning multiplication.
What enrichment do you go to?
I go to science art. And I've made three things, but I have made more. I've made a globe out of a balloon and musay paper. And I have made a parachute out of paper and... And I've made a fish out of paint, googly eyes, and a plastic bottle. The end.
Next, we have Rebecca. And her enrichment teacher is going to help her with her big projects. Why don't you tell them who you are and what you like about the mornings?
I'm Rebecca Beaman. I like my teacher. I get to see her every day. And when she reads stories to us, and that I have math and reading. We do reading for us, and I like to hear my teacher read. So when she says, it's after lunch, we go to the carpet, and she reads a story to us. I love that time. It's like my favorite time of the day. My basement is science camp, and I have lots of stuff that I build. And I brought it from the school, so... I have an airplane.
It's going to fly that way.
Oh, boy, fly.
Oh, good.
And I have a car that we built it like yesterday. A waterloo.
Do you want to do this?
This is going to blow up the balloon. It's out. We having to breathe in it.
What's in there? What are you pushing?
A...
What is, you tell it to mental?
Mental.
Wait a minute, let me do it. Of course, now it doesn't want to go down. Go ahead, click it down there. You want to tell them what happened when we did it in the class?
It blew up the balloon, and something popped, but we're not going to try to make this one pop.
It doesn't want to go in, Rebecca. So I got another way to do it. I'm just not cooperating. I see why. We have a hole. Oh, okay.
Hole in the blue.
Yeah, two, three.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And finally, we have Zaire.
Hi, my name is Zaire Brown, and I go to Agatha's Fort. But now I'm in Macbin in enrichment and summer camp. For the morning, I like to see my teacher, and we do math problems on the board. And then, actually, some fun things we did this week. We actually made fruit popsicles and pancakes today. And the enrichment, today I made this rocket. And the other stuff, the other stuff I made was their little pig's house. And in class, I made, and in class, I made this. We were reading a book called Ribsey, and we were doing a, we had to do a chart for our group and make one. We had to glue pictures. And at the bottom, we, the group I was working in drew pictures, and we colored. That's all. Oh, and my enrichment was reading and engineering.
I do want to add something to what Zaire was saying. When they made the popsicles, it wasn't just making popsicles. It was actually during reading, and they were learning how to read nonfiction following a recipe. So they went through the steps of following the recipe. It wasn't just making popsicles. But they looked really good.
And they brought us pancakes today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Beaman, would you give us a particular of this program as far as age?
Sure. This is a elementary enrichment, obviously remediation, summer school program that's open to all kindergarten through fifth-grade students. Again, we have 500 slots. I think 430 are filled right now, but we're still taking students. Personally, I'd like to thank our teachers, our volunteers, the donors for making this possible because it was a vision a while back, and so many people pulled together. Special thanks to Ms. Pichon and Mrs. Newman for your excitement, enthusiasm for making sure that this happened. To the parents, thank you for coming out today. And students, I know it's tough sometimes speaking in front of a group. You did an awesome job, though. I thank you. I thank you for that. I think the most important thing about this program is that it really illustrates the community pulling together to provide what we need here in Suffolk. Providing the enrichment piece, but also the academics piece. And you can see how excited students are. You can see the types of things that they're doing. This is what teaching and learning is all about. So once again, thank you very much.
And parents out there that have, still have students at home, we have 70 slots left, if I counted correctly, approximately 70 slots, and three more weeks of school from, what, eight to five?
No, not five, eight.
Nine to three.
Nine to three, okay.
Nine to three. Thank you very much.
All right, um, as you take a look at the next item on the agenda, we have our calendar of special events. As you'll turn to page twenty-six, uh, the two, the few things that I'd like to point out. We have the Virginia School Board Association Governors Edu- Conference on Education, July twenty-first. Also, we have our high school summer graduation on July thirtieth. And of course, your school board retreat on August twentieth. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, board members. If you look at the consent agenda, see if you think anything needs to be moved to new business. Uh, please check it out now. If not, can we get a motion approval?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Board member Bisharren?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
New business, um, mandated meal price increases.
Yes, I think we shared with you a few years ago, or maybe the year before last, regarding the mandated student meal price increase process. I'm gonna call to the podium Mr. Doug Doe, our chief of operations, and Mr. Brian Smith. Brian Williams, I'm sorry. Food and nutrition supervisor.
If you refer to page twenty-nine in your board book, you see some information about the increase. Per the state, Suffolk Public Schools will be required to increase the average paid lunch price. What we are requesting is a ten cent increase for both elementary and secondary. Currently, the elementary price for the full student lunch is one sixty. So recommending a change or an increase from one sixty to one seventy. And the secondary price, changing that by ten cents also from one seventy-five to one eighty-five. At this time, Mr. Williams is gonna share a little additional information concerning this.
Good evening. The USDA has mandated that any school participating in the National School Lunch Program must ensure that sufficient funds are collected for a full-priced paid meal. Therefore, school systems that charge less than an average of two dollars and seventy cents for a paid lunch may be required to raise prices by a maximum of ten cents annually. Therefore, depending upon the inflation rate, it is highly probable that Suffolk Public Schools will be required to raise meal prices in the sixteen-seventeen school year. But as revealed in the enclosed chart, Suffolk Public Schools' meal prices are among the most economical in this region. Thank you.
And that chart's on page thirty. If you'd like to look at our neighboring divisions, we're still second to last as far as the price of our meals, I believe. Yes, this is an action item.
We have a motion to accept this.
I move to accept the mandated meal price increase of ten cents. Second.
Board member Bisharren?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school calendar.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna call Ms. Jacqueline Chavis again to share with you the two thousand sixteen-seventeen proposed school calendar. Ms. Chavis.
This is on page thirty-one in your packet and it's also pages thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four. All that is part of this presentation, but we're gonna look particularly at page thirty-one. The calendar committee is made up of parents, teachers, administrators, um, the teacher association, as well as someone from transportation, food service. So we have a very diverse committee who works together to develop each calendar each year. What I'd like to bring your attention to with this particular calendar would be um, again, you can see here, we're starting on September sixth, which is a little bit later, as we will this school year. November eighth, uh, for the last couple of years, the superintendent has approved virtual clerical days for our teachers. And that has been something that has been very positive for our teachers. And we've received really good feedback because they can have work, um, work at their pace and uh, report only if they should need to do that. They can work from home. So we're continuing that with this particular calendar. December, you can see the nineteenth through the thirtieth, that is another, that is our winter break. The teachers have also responded very positively to having two full weeks home during that winter break. And that is another reason we also had to go back and look at the calendar that you just approve revisions to. Because we have to make up time, uh, to give them that two full weeks. We have to get it from somewhere else. And so we try to continue to give them that time in the calendar. On January twenty, you can see there, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. That again will be uh, high school and middle school exams. And again, early release for middle and high school students only. March fifteenth was a professional development day for teachers. That would be a day if we should need it for makeup, we have that. And then April tenth through fourteenth is spring break. And this will be a spring break that occurs before Easter Sunday. Many times that comes up as a question. And then this particular calendar, the committee requested that we have two full days at the end of the year for elementary, but the very last day of school will be a half day. And that's reflected in this calendar. That ends our presentation.
Questions by board members? Get a motion to accept the calendar, please.
I move that we accept the calendar as recommended. Second.
Board member Bisharren?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have public speakers on our agenda items. Mr. Williams. Newsom, please. Mr. Newsom, are you here?
All right, thank you. We'll wait for you, buddy. Currently, the elementary price for the full student lunch is one sixty. So recommending a change or an increase from one sixty to one seventy. And the secondary price, changing that by ten cents also from one seventy-five to one eighty-five. At this time, Mr. Williams is gonna share a little additional information concerning this.
Good evening. The USDA has mandated that any school participating in the National School Lunch Program must ensure that sufficient funds are collected for a full-priced paid meal. Therefore, school systems that charge less than an average of two dollars and seventy cents for a paid lunch may be required to raise prices by a maximum of ten cents annually. Therefore, depending upon the inflation rate, it is highly probable that Suffolk Public Schools will be required to raise meal prices in the sixteen-seventeen school year. But as revealed in the enclosed chart, Suffolk Public Schools' meal prices are among the most economical in this region. Thank you.
And that chart's on page thirty. If you'd like to look at our neighboring divisions, we're still second to last as far as the price of our meals, I believe. Yes, this is an action item.
We have a motion to accept this.
I move to accept the mandated meal price increase of ten cents. Second.
Board member Bisharren?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school calendar.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna call Ms. Jacqueline Chavis again to share with you the two thousand sixteen-seventeen proposed school calendar. Ms. Chavis.
This is on page thirty-one in your packet and it's also pages thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four. All that is part of this presentation, but we're gonna look particularly at page thirty-one. The calendar committee is made up of parents, teachers, administrators, um, the teacher association, as well as someone from transportation, food service. So we have a very diverse committee who works together to develop each calendar each year. What I'd like to bring your attention to with this particular calendar would be um, again, you can see here, we're starting on September sixth, which is a little bit later, as we will this school year. November eighth, uh, for the last couple of years, the superintendent has approved virtual clerical days for our teachers and that has been something that has been very positive for our teachers and we've received really good feedback because they can have work, work at their pace and uh, report only if they should need to do that. They can work from home. So we're continuing that with this particular calendar. December, you can see the nineteenth through the thirtieth, that is another, that is our winter break. The teachers have also responded very positively to having two full weeks home during that winter break. And that is another reason we also had to go back and look at the calendar that you just approve revisions to. Because we have to make up time, uh, to give them that two full weeks. We have to get it from somewhere else. And so we try to continue to give them that time in the calendar. On January twenty, you can see there, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. That again will be uh, high school and middle school exams. And again, early release for middle and high school students only. March fifteenth was a professional development day for teachers. That would be a day if we should need it for makeup, we have that. And then April tenth through fourteenth is spring break. And this will be a spring break that occurs before Easter Sunday. Many times that comes up as a question. And then this particular calendar, the committee requested that we have two full days at the end of the year for elementary, but the very last day of school will be a half day. And that's reflected in this calendar. That ends our presentation.
Questions by board members? Get a motion to accept the calendar, please.
I move that we accept the calendar as recommended. Second.
Board member Bisharren?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have public speakers on our agenda items. Mr. Williams. Newsom, please. Mr. Newsom, are you here? All right, thank you. We'll wait for you, buddy.
Uh, good evening, superintendent of schools, chairman of the school board, vice chair and uh, other members of the school board. I want to tell you one thing. Probably you don't know this because I have to do a little research. You know, sitting up here, you're the most educated school board in the United States of America.
Sorry, let's say that again.
You are the most educated school board in the United States of America. You understand that?
I do.
In terms of you with terminal degrees or degrees plus, you're the most educated. And you look in the Commonwealth of Virginia, you go up to Arlington, Fairfax, there's no comparison. You go south and I don't count anything past North Carolina because everything, anything past North Carolina is never, neverland towards where I'm concerned. But uh, you know, and uh, this is one thing, uh, and I'm not a stranger talking. Uh, my family spent over three hundred years in the Suffolk school system. Working at different capacities in Suffolk schools. I won't call their names because I think a few of them are still working. But uh, I'm real concerned that we have not made any fundamental changes in the Suffolk schools. I graduated from high school fifty years ago. And we have not made any fundamental changes. And we must change because the world itself has changed. We cannot win tomorrow's battle with yesterday's strategy. And you have to be a visionary. Now, I look at Suffolk, they were talking about putting a library downtown. That's a waste of money. What we need downtown is a vocational, comprehensive vocational technical school if we move anything downtown. I, I listen at all the honor students that come up here and that's wonderful, going to college. And college is good if you're going for the right reason. College now is not what college was thirty, forty, fifty years ago. If you go into college and major in sociology or Chi- or German or something like that, the question is, what are you gonna do with the degree that, when you get the degree? A person that goes to school and becomes a licensed electrician, a plumber, will have a better life in terms financially. And if you're looking for the finance, people go to law school. We have more lawyers now looking for jobs. And one was even suing a law school because he didn't get a job. He wanted that average salary, which he never received. But I think we need some change because I see kids walking street all day because they have not been educated. And it's our fault. We need to stop fooling ourselves. All these kids, they drop out because we forced them out. You say, you should take Algebra One, okay? Now, how many of you took statistics and grad? We took all this stuff. How many of you ever actually used it? Now, think about it. We took all this, take that, take that. I took all this, and you know, and now I can use my telephone and find out all the information I want to know. With just a telephone. And we said, elaborate. And I said, elaborate? And we need a vocational technical school for these young people. We gotta stop fooling ourselves. There's a book, maybe you'll read this book. It's where the smart kids are. And everybody, and worldwide. Everybody says, oh, it's probably uh, China or Japan or Korea now. But guess where? It's a country called Finland. Most people haven't even heard of Finland. Don't even know where to locate a problem on the map. But all the schools in Finland are the same. No matter where you go to school, all the schools are the same. Isn't that something? Now, in this country, your zip code determines the education you receive. And it's sad, but it's true. And the little red schoolhouse was painted red because why? Simple. Red paint was cheap paint. And that's why it was painted red. Now, we've got to start thinking, what are we gonna do with our young people? We have a vast minority of population and many of these kids are disadvantaged. If you create a vocational school downtown, a huge vocational school and give them some fundamental job, then they could get off with these welfare rolls and have some pride in themselves. Because you just, you just keep rolling and rolling and rolling back in the same thing. And think you're gonna get different results. Now, Norfolk for years led this area, now it's Virginia Beach. And the mayor told me, said, well, Suffolk can't compete with Virginia. Well, you must compete. You must compete against Arlington. When they look at all the schools, now you go and look at this, all of the schools, all the stuff coming out of Fairfax County. Now, some came out of Pennsylvania, other than moonshiners. A lot of teachers came out of Pennsylvania because they had all these teacher colleges in Pennsylvania, like Slippery Rock. And uh, Dr. DeBransky, uh, aware of this, Slippery Rock State Teachers College, this. And they all, because of job, came to Northern Virginia when it was booming. And you know, because there weren't any jobs basically in Pennsylvania, so they moved to Virginia. Those schools have since, universities have since changed the other thing. Because the world has changed. We need to do something. Now, I called to the school board and uh, one person called, we talked about some kids that cut school that came forward. And we got a negative response from the schools, one person answered the phone. Now, I could take that because I noticed, but when parents call, you should respond. You know, when you're having problems. Now, we have all these schools that are non-accredited and counselors giving you money, but let me tell you something. Money will not solve all your problems. Because that's American thing. You know, America printing money day and night, printing, printing, money, money. Money will not solve all your problems. We have to have a fundamental change in the system. You have to be a visionary. And we're doing the same thing and you applaud yourselves, all the honor students and all. But we have to change something fundamentally and realize everyone's not going to college. But if they have a fundamental trade, they'll be successful. The greatest educator in Virginia was Thomas Jefferson. What did he start? He started the University of Virginia. What people don't realize is he also started West Point. And Colgate Dodge, another great educator in Virginia, said, you will need high school plus two years of advanced training, you'll be able to survive. Now, why can't we do this? We wait these kids get out of school, they lost, they end up in trouble because they have no fundamental skills. And once they get fundamental skills where they can get jobs, like they've done in Philadelphia with Broad Street, they uh, created a vocational school and these young people trained for uh, entry jobs in the hotel industry because they have a shortage. They'll have a chance to elevate themselves if they care to and it might not be what they want. But we have to do more to our young people. We have a discipline problem in the schools. Now, I'm not gonna name a school, but I know what I'm talking about. Because I talk with the students and they tell me things. Two things you talk with, found out how a school is, you talk with the janitor and the secretary, they can tell you anything you want to know about the school. And uh, we have this problem. Now, we require a two-point average participating in athletics. Suffolk's uh, recreation program is poor. At best. It is poor at best. Let these young people, they meet the Virginia High School League or pass, let them participate. Most of them probably will not go, go in the NFL. I think we had one young man in the NFL. And in terms of high school recruits, uh, the last big high school recruit we had, the person fifty years old, Melvin Jackson. He went to UCLA. And since then, I think we had somebody, I think from something with the Duke or a few other schools. But guess what? They had more at Ocean Lake side this year than all of Suffolk for Division One. So let these young people participate. If they participate, they will be an example, role model for the other young people. See, if you, if you pass your classes and stay out of trouble, you can participate. If they decide they want to play college or whatever, they go to prep school or what have you and go to that level. And once they get there, they'll find out maybe that wasn't for them at all, you know, because everybody sees the NFL or the NBA, all that this. And so some things, that would cut down on discipline. Once a week, every other week, they could sit at the cafeteria, have a table reserved, they could wear a shirt and tie.
Mr. Newsom, thirty seconds.
Okay. But we need some fundamental changes. You're trying to win, you're not doing a good job. Suffolk needs some fundamental changes, else we'll be behind everybody. Now, Isle of Wight County is probably the second best school district in the region after the beach. They slipped up from nowhere and we still talking about what we gonna do. Only, only thing we want to do is build more schools and have more teachers. And that is not an education plan. plan. I thank you for your time. I'm not criticizing, I'm just telling you what all the people really know. And nobody's saying we try to act like it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom, appreciate it. Business by board members, we'll start with Ms. Barham.
Just want to commend all the people who are working diligently in our summer programs. We have a lot of administrators and staff that are going beyond the call of duty. And they're doing an excellent job. I appreciate all that they're doing, and I know that we're going to see the results of especially this new program that has come on board, along with some others that are being implemented in our school system. And I commend all of those teachers and staff members, administrators, who have planned all of this, and it's taken a lot of time and energy, and I think the benefits we will soon reap. Thank you.
Ms. Barham, I mean, Ms. Bishard?
Ditto.
Ditto, okay. Ms. Skeeter?
Same.
Okay. Mr. Mittnick?
Yeah, I'd just like to say how much I've enjoyed working in the LEAP program as a volunteer. Ms. Johnson is a third-grade teacher that I volunteer for every Wednesday. And it's amazing how excited the kids are to come each day with the creativity that the teachers are allowed in their programming. And, you know, the kids are not worried, and the teachers aren't worried about assessments at the end of the program. And, you know, the third graders that I work with are having a ball, going through different workshops and learning centers each day. And I've learned quite a bit myself from them. So I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Bishan and Ms. Connor for putting the program together and recruiting all the community volunteers. I hope that we can look at perhaps continuing partnerships with some of our community volunteers for the LEAP program.
Dr. Butt?
I just want to say ditto to the others. I think it's wonderful, and congratulations to all of you who are working with it. It's really nice to see the end result of the program that you introduced us to at the, when we met with the Community Services Board folks. So it's, it's just nice to see the ending of a program when you've seen the beginning. I'm just very pleased and excited about it.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland? I guess I'll be last, then. I'd like for us to look at the fourth-grade student class size, and how many students are not making the grade? Failure rate in fourth grade, class size, and how many teacher ages do we have for the fourth grade, if any? Second thing is the writing program. Do we have a structured writing program?
Yes, we did. There are writing objectives that every grade level has to follow through.
Can we have a report on that? It's a workshop.
The retreat?
Yes.
Sure, the writing program, sure.
How about, now, do we have any unique scheduling for reading and math?
When you say unique scheduling, of course, every student on the elementary K through five, they're scheduled for reading and math. In middle school as well, the English courses or any math courses that they're, at a high school, of course, they choose the course that they want.
How about, how about those students, or do we have any parallel scheduling for?
In some instances, that might be a matter of a remediation block, or remediation time that's either before school, after school, or during, during school.
Okay. All right, the other thing I like, we're going to talk about the IB program and the...
Yes, that's on the retreat agenda.
The other thing I'd like to talk about is, we have an opportunity now with Kingsfork High School to change that, change the perception of the school, and I think we need to take that now, where we are, and go from here. In three years, I'd like to see that school become a magnet school of sorts, with, like Mr. Newsom said, with things like entrepreneurialship. Let me see if I can read my writing. Hotel management. And I think that needs to be our school, that is our magnet school within a magnet school.
We can certainly look at the course offerings and work with that as well, yes.
Last thing is, of course, is I think that we need to address some of the needs that we have at our schools, and one of them would be where we have problems with staff members not being comfortable. I think we need to go ahead and look at the site-based management model we talked about.
Site-based management? Are you talking of the teacher advisory, where they have input?
That's it.
Okay, teacher advisory, yes. We have, one of the things that I've noticed that during the superintendent's advisory, which each school has a teacher rep, some of the issues could be perhaps dealt with at the school level. So as we move into the 15, 16 year, every school's going to be required to have a teacher advisory council that meets and works with the principal as far as some of the shared decision-making. And I say "some," I can't stress it. But I had not planned to move towards a site-based management piece. But as far as teacher advisory, that's certainly something that we can do.
Okay, I think we'll look at that first, then. See if we have anything else.
Dr. DeBransky?
Yes.
When you said move toward a magnet school, what school were you thinking of as a model for that?
Thomas Jefferson and Alexandria.
Okay.
That's one of the, I mean, I think we need to move beyond the traditional role that we have now.
Right.
And I think Mr. Newsom brought it out, but it doesn't have to be all academics. It should certainly be some things that we don't offer.
Okay, that would be good if we could learn about that school, because I don't know anything about that school, Thomas Jefferson in Alexandria. That would be good to know about how they operate.
I'm not familiar with it either, as far as what they offer. But, I mean, I can research it, and then we can talk about different programs and things that we could do as far as moving, if that's the board's pleasure to move towards a model like that or explore it.
Well, I'd like to look at, take a look at it in our retreat and talk about it.
Okay.
Put on the retreat.
Are you talking about Thomas Jefferson's magnet, Governor's School in Alexandria?
Yes.
Okay. It is a Governor's School for the government.
I don't expect for this just to be a Governor's School. This is, I think this should be a non-Governor's School. I don't want it to be just unique for only a few individuals. I think it should be open to the people that attend there, but also provide other avenues of success rather than just academic and...
Yeah, that's a magnet school, you know, what you're talking about.
Right.
Let me ask the question, since you were talking about that. I know we have programs at our Prudence Center, and I know we have...
All right. I know we have programs at our Prudence Center. Our programs are, of course, in combination with Alhawite at our Prudence Center. I know we have the vocational programs, because we've talked about it. I don't serve on that board, you guys do. But we've talked about those kinds of things that we do do, and the options that we have. As a matter of fact, at, was it last year's sport retreat, we talked about many of our alternative programs, and some of the other things, the other options that we have for students. So I think maybe we should do a better job as well of getting that information out to the public, so that they realize what options are available in Suffolk Public Schools in addition to the traditional options.
Good idea.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Any other board members have any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead on.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second. Board Member Bishard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the pupil personnel report as presented.
Second. Board Member Bishard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Personnel Action 14 slash 15 dash 14 as presented.
You're approving the request of the person, or you're denying the request of the appeal?
We deny, okay.
So you wish to deny the request of the student appeal?
Yes. Oh, the student appeal, oh, yes, oh, yes, thank you.
Are you doing the student appeal?
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the Personnel Action 14 dash 15...
14.
The student appeal.
As presented by the appeal.
Right. Second.
Okay, second. You did say deny, right.
Deny.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to understand. Okay, I second.
You have a motion and second.
Board Member Bishard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman DeBransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Like to refer to informational items. Board members, if you look at any informational items that need to be addressed, please bring forth informational items. None being brought forth, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for today. Come back and see us next month, if you would, please. Thank you very much.